...of the Regional Transportation Mission. Ms. Maynard.
Thank you, Chairman, Members of the Commission. Your first item is to conduct your first citizens’ participation period.
This is the first time set aside for public comment. Anyone wishing to provide public comment with regards to any matters that are on today’s agenda, please step forward to the podium and state your name, spell your last name for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Good morning.
Good morning. For the record, Ann Barnett, A-N-N-B-A-R-N-E-T-T.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, my name is Ann Barnett. I am the CEO for the Nevada Contractors Association and proud, longtime member of TRAC. I am here to voice the association’s support of TRAC’s resolution related to transportation, infrastructure, and transit. As you know, may know, the Nevada Contractors Association has supported the passage and extension of fuel revenue indexing, which has generated more than $2.9 billion to fund roadway projects and create over 20,000 jobs throughout the valley since 2014. Without this funding, we wouldn’t have been able to keep pace with our community’s growth over the last decade. It is a continuation is critical to the Southern Nevada future. Thank you, Commissioners, for your support as we all work together to enhancing the community’s infrastructure and mobility network. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Barnett. Mr. DeSalvio.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and fellow Commissioners. My name, for the record, Louis DeSalvio, President of Labor’s Local 872. I’m here to voice the strong support for the Transportation and Resource Advisory Committee Resolution. As you know, over the past six months, our committee has examined the RTC infrastructure and mobility challenges and explored strategies to address them. With Southern Nevada population projected to grow 14% by 2023, the demand for our already constrained transportation system will only increase. The Fuel Revenue Index Program has been vital, creating thousands of jobs in our community, particularly for laborers, extending this program essentially to abstain employment opportunities and addressing our infrastructure needs. I want to thank you for allowing me to serve on the TRAC Committee and your commitment to advocating mobility and infrastructure for Southern Nevada. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeSalvio. Mr. Schneider.
Good morning, Chair Jones and members of the Commission. For the record, Ms. Schneider, Director of Government Affairs for the Vegas Chamber, just wanted to quickly voice our support and echo the comments of my colleagues of both the resolution from TRAC as well as fuel revenue indexing as a whole. The upkeep and maintenance of our roads is essential to just about every single business in this valley. So, thank you so much for your work on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider. Mr. Thompson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Danny Thompson. I’m here today representing our Chairman, Warren Hardy, who is the Chairman of the TRAC Committee that just concluded our work. I’m the Vice Chairman. I would tell you that fuel revenue, and I know I’m not telling you something you all don’t already know, that the fuel revenue index tax money is critical to the infrastructure of Southern Nevada. And without it, every business, every person will be impacted, and replacing it would be almost impossible, given all the competition for tax dollars these days. We developed a list of recommendations for you all to consider, and we would urge your support. We had meetings throughout last year. They were open to the public, had public participation, and the outcome is the work you’re going to receive from Jeremy Aguero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. Thompson.
Good morning, Board and Chairman. My name is Eric Hupp, H-U-P-P, Paratransit Operator for the last almost 10 years. Here, looking forward to working with TransDev, looking forward to a smooth and easy transition. There will be bumps in the road, but I’m hoping that the final vote does have TransDev in the driver’s seat. We worked well with them when they were here last time. Some of their management is the same management, and we look forward to continue working with them. Thank you.
Welcome and thank you. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment? Seeing none, we’ll go ahead and close the first public comment period, and I’ll turn it back to Ms. Maynard.
Thanks, Chairman. The next item is to approve your consent agenda, but we would like to pull non-consent item number 27. We will bring that item back to you next month for your consideration. So, with that said, the agenda is in order and ready for your approval with that stipulation.
All right. I’ll entertain a motion with that request.
Motion to approve this amendment.
All right. There’s a motion on the floor. Call those in favor.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. And I’ll just note for the record, we do have some absences here today, and we’re still waiting some appointments to our board, and we’re looking forward to having a full board for February.
Thank you. The next item is to receive your CEO report. Oh, I’m sorry. What? Okay, got it. Okay. I’ll come back to that. So, let’s see. Drumroll, please. We are excited to welcome Mr. Tom Marcucci. He’s our new Director, RTC Deputy CEO. Tom is, Tom has been in the industry, transit industry, for over 32 years. He spent his career in Philadelphia at SEPTA, which is the sixth-largest and busiest transit system in the United States, multimodal. Tom began his career as a bus operator, and so he brings a distinct, distinct knowledge and empathy to what the employees do in terms of keeping the community moving. Excited for his leadership. He’s fit right in. I’ve already seen he and Angela have gone, they’ve had lots of conversations. Dave, it’s quite the team right here to my right. So, I’d like to officially welcome Tom Marcucci. And Tom, I don’t know if there’s anything you want to say.
I’m appreciative to be here. I look forward to a longstanding relationship with RTC and doing all I can to move the organization forward and build collaboration with everybody. So, greatly appreciate it.
Welcome aboard.
Yay, Tom!
And I would just say, a few years ago, we did some bus tours, and maybe as we have some new members of this board coming on, we’ll have some opportunities to do some more bus tours around town. Commish? Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Marcucci, as I understand, you started off as an actual driver, right?
That is correct. Yes, sir. I did.
So, I guess in military terms, you’re a Mustang coming up to the ranks, right?
I am. I am.
Well, thank you very much, and definitely, I think you bring an added dimension to this organization.
I greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, great. Let me go back here. So, we wanted to take time today to, is not here yet? Okay. Let me come back to that then. Okay. This is always a great part of this year. Probably get to recognize hard-working employees. This month, we’re going to, excuse me, recognize TransDev Body Repair Technician Jade Lopez. Let’s watch as Roger Johnson, who’s our Director of Fleet Maintenance and Technical Equipment, surprise Jade with his award.
Thank you, MJ. Today, I have the pleasure to recognize an exceptional member of the TransDev Team. Jade Lopez is an outstanding and dedicated body repair technician. Jade consistently exceeds expectations in his role. His expertise and proactive approach has saved the RTC significant resources by avoiding costly outsourcing and minimizing vehicle downtime. He also solves supply chain challenges by manufacturing parts when they’re not available, ensuring our fleet is always ready to roll. His willingness to share his knowledge with his colleagues makes him a true asset to the team. Let’s honor Jade with the Crystal Bus Award. I’m Roger Johnson. I’m the Director for RTC Fleet Maintenance. I’m here on behalf of the RTC Board of Commissioners and our CEO, MJ Maynard, to present you with a Crystal Bus Award. This is in recognition of all your outstanding efforts, your expertise to your craft, and your dedication to teamwork. So, thank you for a job well done.
Thank you, RTC, and thank you for my supervisors for recognizing my hard work, and thank you for the Crystal Bus. I appreciate it, and thank you.
Is Jade here? Oh, there he is. He’s up at the top. Just walked in. Congratulations, Jade.
So, let me go back here. Like to today recognize, and this is, this is very heartfelt. We’d like to acknowledge that one of our longest-serving operators sadly passed away several days before Christmas. Jeffrey Bethel started driving for the RTC when we launched in 1992. In fact, he celebrated 30 years of service with us two years ago and kept driving until recently. He actually spent over 40 careers driving a bus here in Southern Nevada because he started Las Vegas Transit. And so, it says a lot about who he is and his character, and he is going to be sadly missed. We want to honor him for his dedication, express our sympathy to his family and loved ones. Jeffrey, so Cheryl is here today. So, Cheryl, if you’d like to come down and accept a Crystal Bus in memory of your
On behalf of the Board and on behalf of our CEO and the entire team, we want to present this Crystal Bus Award posthumously on behalf of Jeffrey and express to you our deepest condolences and appreciation for the decades of service he provided to tens of thousands of transit riders over his career. So, thank you so, so much for, for his living legacy.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
I just want to say thank you to everybody. I just want to say thank you to everybody. He enjoyed his job, and I miss him so much. We’re having a celebration of life event for anyone, February 7th. It’ll be, hold on. It’ll be at the Calvary Harvest Life Chapel, Calvary Chapel Harvest Life Church on 5300 North Rainbow Boulevard, if anybody’s interested in coming. It’ll be at 6:00 PM.
Thank you so much.
And Cheryl, thank you for being here. And again, we appreciate your husband, and it’s all that he did for our community. Thank you. We have one more. Next. I’ll have her sit down. Okay. Okay. She’s a Customer Service Representative from CDS. That is our External Customer Call Center. To present this special item, we have a video from Antoinette Braddock, who’s the Senior Director of Paratransit and Specialized Services. So, let’s watch.
Thank you, MJ. Today, I’m honored to highlight the exceptional employee at Computer Data Services, our contractor that helps provide 24-hour customer care for our fixed route service. Amaya Knight has demonstrated remarkable dedication and skill as a customer service representative. Not only does Amaya excel in providing customers with excellent service, but she does so efficiently, maintaining an impressive average handle time, just over 90 seconds, in line with the company’s goal of addressing each caller’s need within two minutes. Over the last five months, Amaya has helped more than 14,000 people, senior agents and leads appreciate Amaya’s positive attitude, ability to utilize her tools to de-escalate challenging situations, and navigate the calls without assistance. Amaya’s great work ethic and commitment to providing top-notch service has set very high standards for CDS. Let’s surprise her with the Crystal Bus Award.
Amaya, my name is Antoinette Braddock, and I am the Senior Director of RTC Paratransit and Customer Service. It is my honor today to get to meet you, but virtually on behalf of our CEO and the RTC Board, I’m going to virtually, but I’d like to award you with the RTC Crystal Bus Award. Your ability to utilize your tools in de-escalation and, you know, getting through sometimes some really hard calls as we go through some things with construction and stuff here down in Las Vegas. We just appreciate the work that you do on behalf of the RTC and for our customers.
It’s just great when we see our team is rewarded for their work, and Amaya, one of the youngest people on our team, she stands out like a rock star.
Okay. Well, thank you. I really do appreciate it. I just really appreciate the opportunity.
Well, Amaya, I just found out is not here, but again, she is a rock star in an easy job. But we would like to have Jade come down and take a picture with other Commissioners. Congratulations, Jade. We’ve heard great things about you. Thank you, Jade. Okay, so we, as we do every month, Commissioners, we’re providing a transit ridership update for November 2024, year-over-year comparison. As you can see here, residential continues to grow, the on-demand continues to grow in terms of ridership, and this month, we saw 10% increase in our ridership and the dues, and we certainly attribute that to not only the large Formula One event that was here, but again, lots, November used to be a slow time here in Las Vegas, not anymore. So, again, it’s nice to see that increase. And that’s just, again, this rolling indicator of the ridership there. So, I’m going to pass, for the next adjournment, I’m going to pass it over to our Deputy CEO, David Swallow. He’s going to provide to you a quarterly roadway funding update.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. David Swallow, Deputy CEO for the RTC, for the record. I’d like to begin the second quarter roadway funding report in highlighting, I think what’s really impressive is, to date, we’ve had 702 roadway projects that have started, with 484 of those completed to date. These projects are made possible by all local funding sources, including fuel revenue indexing, motor vehicle fuel tax, and sales tax. As you can also see on the chart, we have 104 of those in design and another 114 in construction. In addition to that, to date, we have nearly $2.9 billion in contracts that have been let with the local jurisdictions for these projects. Nearly $2.5 billion of that is from fuel taxes and $460 million in sales tax. When you look at the number of dollars under contract, as you can see here, we separate them out by the revenue, which is the green, the contracts that we’ve awarded, which is the red. So, we have about $2.9, almost $3 billion in contracts, and nearly $2.8 billion of that, a little bit over the $2.8 billion in revenue. We’ve also put out nearly $2.2 billion in bills being paid. So, that’s the work actually getting done, and as a result of that, we estimate that over 20,000 jobs have been created or sustained throughout this program. For this quarter, the second quarter of the fiscal year 2025, we have a number of projects that we want to highlight. There are a lot of them, but we’re going to just highlight some of them here for you. The first is from Clark County on Decatur Boulevard between Tropicana and Sahara. The project involved removal and reconstruction of pavement on Decatur and the intersecting side streets. Other improvements included upgrades to the ADA ramps, modifications to traffic signals, and enhancements to center medians with landscaping and other aesthetic treatments. We did other, the county also did sidewalk repairs and installed concrete bus pads at the transit stops to keep that pavement in good working order, streetlight upgrades, and new pavement markings and signage. Project wrapped up in September with a cost of approximately $25.7 million. Next project I’d like to highlight is in the city of Las Vegas. This is one that is focused on safety. Charleston Boulevard at Torrey Pines and Lake Mead at Jones were these intersection improvements at two key intersections. They added several bus turnouts, added right turn lanes, enhancing traffic flow to be more smooth and efficient. The projects were funded in part by congestion mitigation and air quality funds, that’s federal money, that complemented the FRI funds that were put into the project. In total, the project was about $5.8 million and was completed in June. Next project we’d like to highlight is with the city of Henderson, intersections and safety improvements Phase 1, Erie Avenue from Bermuda Road and Amigo Street intersections. After receiving community input regarding two stop sign-controlled intersections in West Henderson, the city of Henderson completed a project to improve safety and reduce congestion, and these are located near Liberty High School. The project upgraded both intersections to, from stop signs to traffic signals, also adding accessible pedestrian signals, push buttons, sidewalk improvements, and other things to bring it up to ADA standards. New lighting and medians were installed in the project, we think has made it safer for students and helping ease traffic during the bell time. To minimize disruptions, the city and their contractor, MC4, worked to complete the majority of construction during the summer break starting in June. This involved expediting a lot of reviews and loaning the contractor inventory of, say, streetlight poles and mast arms and other equipment to help expedite the work. And ultimately, major construction on both intersections was completed and activated in early August, so helped ease the start of the new school year. Going over to the city of Mesquite, we have citywide roadway improvements throughout the city. Construction took place in two locations, Haven Lane between Riverside Road and Falcon Ridge Parkway, and Pioneer Boulevard from Whitwer Trail and Isaac Newton Drive. The project included removing and replacing approximately 365,000 square feet of asphalt pavement, installing new curbs, gutters, and sidewalks, and then putting in new pavement, striping, and signage. Project wrapped up in October 2024 at a cost of approximately $1.7 million. Next, the city of Boulder City. This is a pavement preservation project the city focused on, improving conditions by applying over 115,000 square yards of slurry seal to various streets throughout the city. Additionally, the project included new pavement markings and striping to improve visibility and enhance safety. This project wrapped up in December 2024 with a cost of approximately $1.5 million. And last but not least, the city of North Las Vegas had work on the Gowan Outfall Alexander Road from Decatur Boulevard to Simmons Street. This project was funded through an inter-local agreement and was bid in conjunction with the Gowan Outfall Clark County Regional Flood Control District project to maximize efficiency. Construction included major upgrades to storm drain infrastructure beneath key arterial roads, removing and replacing damaged asphalt pavement, and then updating the pavement markings and making necessary utility adjustments. All of these measures together aimed at improving the roadway durability, improving stormwater management in the area. Project wrapped up in October 2024 with a cost of approximately $7 million. Now, there are, as you can see on the screen, a number of other projects that were completed this last quarter. I think it really speaks to the outstanding efforts of the jurisdictions to put those funds to work in improving the infrastructure for our community. As always, we like to remind folks that, you know, there are a lot of orange cones on the street, and I know that can be a little challenging as you’re trying to move around town, but there is a way to stay informed. If you want to understand what’s going on with a particular project or just see what’s going on in the area, you can log on to the RTC’s SeeingOrangeNV.com website, where we have all the projects, both publicly funded as well as any of the privately funded projects that we can estimate based on permits, utility work and that. So, go on to SeeingOrangeNV.com, or if you don’t feel like logging on to the website, we’re always welcome, phone calls at 702-928-CONE or 2663.
Counsel McNamara.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Just a request, and I’m pretty sure I’ve been stuck in the traffic behind all those orange cones in every construction site there is, but every time that, as I’m driving through it, I’m thinking that every cone equals a job. So, in your future presentations, and maybe there’s a way to publicly display this on the internet, is no matter how much money we’re spending, every one of those dollars is going into someone’s pocket. Can we also articulate how many jobs each one of those projects is creating and incorporate that into future presentations? Because this is a lot of people that are being employed because of this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Excellent point. And lastly, I would like to close my report by saying thank you to our Transportation Resource Advisory Committee members. You’ll be hearing from Jeremy Aguero of Applied Analysis about the committee’s latest phase and recommended strategies moving forward. We wouldn’t be able to advance many of our priorities without TRAC’s leadership and support. We understand the time and energy our 30 TRAC members invest and value their guidance as they represent stakeholders from all areas of the valley, including business, labor, and community. Some have served on TRAC since day one, and we’ve had TRAC in place for about 10 years. So, really want to, again, express the time, express our thanks for their time and commitment too. We’re going to be half of our community. And so, with that, this concludes your CEO report.
So, real quick, on that note, can we have all our TRAC Committee members stand up? I know we heard from a few of them earlier, but we want to give them a round of applause for, to appreciate them. We know Chair Hardy wasn’t able to be here today, but we did speak to him yesterday and share our appreciation with him and the entire TRAC Committee for the amount of time that they spent to really give us the input that we need going up to legislature.
Thank you, Chairman. The next item on your agenda is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director’s Support, and we have Deputy Director Mario Gomez here today.
Great. Director Gomez.
Thank you. Good morning and Happy New Year, and thank you for the opportunity to provide an update this morning. Mine is going to be a relatively short presentation today. I’m going to start off with, let me see. Okay. First slide here is, you know, at the beginning of a new year, I’d like to share some of our more recent traffic safety data with everyone. This data runs through December 31st of 2024, showing that there was a 5.6% increase in fatal crashes from between 2023 and 2024 statewide. 293 of those total, 412 fatalities were in Clark County. Speed and impairment still remain the largest contributing factors for fatalities. In Clark County, there was a 13% increase in fatal crashes and pedestrian fatalities also increased by more than 14%. Motorcycle fatalities increased more than 20% while bicycle fatalities increased by 10%. To save lives and reduce fatal crashes, end out in our partner statewide, continue to use the Strategic Highway Safety Plan. The plan has been, has established statewide goals and strategies which focus on elements of traffic safety, including engineering, education, enforcement, and emergency response. The Speed Management Action Plan has also been implemented to develop further multidisciplinary strategies to help manage speed on our roads and our highways. With these measures and initiatives, and that in our partners implement strategies to reduce the total number of fatal crashes, as well as reinforcing the importance of staying buckled while in a vehicle, driving sober and following speed limits on all roadways. while in a vehicle, driving sober, and following speed limits on all roadways. Some really great news on our I-15 Tropicana project. We are currently in Phase Three and Phase Four of our project. So with those two phases, the work that entails at the moment is finishing up the reconstruction of the bridges over I-15, Frank Sinatra Drive and Dean Martin Drive. Also, the construction of the I-15 northbound off-ramp to Tropicana and Frank Sinatra. Completion of the I-15 southbound flyover ramp to Tropicana eastbound. And then widening Tropicana on the south side. Construction of a new Joey Bishop roadway. Reconfiguration of the Tropicana and Dean Martin intersection. Sewer work, elevated sidewalk installation, painting, lighting, and aesthetics. So I know it sounds like a lot, but we're, we're really moving and making a tremendous amount of progress on this project. So the Tropicana on-ramp and flyover are expected to open in March of this year. Impacts on mainline I-15 are expected to be lifted in March of this year as well. The issue with that is that the timeline shifted due on forsen utility coordination challenges. And as aligning schedules with multiple utility agencies proved to be somewhat complex in nature for, during the construction of this project. Additionally, major events such as the Formula One and the Super Bowl required full site shutdowns, further impacting our timeline. So Phase Five involves widening Tropicana west of I-15, specifically between Polaris and Valley View. And Phase Five is expected to be concluded sometime in September of this year before F1 kicks off again. Endot is being awarded $16.8 million through the Federal Highway Administration Wildlife Crossing Pilot Program to fund the Coyote Springs Tortoise Crossing Project. This initiative focuses on the 34-mile stretch of US 93 in Clark County and Lincoln Counties as a key area of critical habitat for the Mojave Desert Tortoise in Clark County. The project includes 61 wildlife undercrossings and 68 miles of exclusionary fencing designed to keep tortoises off the highway. These features will protect this threatened species while also improving safety for motorists by reducing wildlife and vehicle collisions. In addition to the federal grant, the project benefits from contributions by state funds. In particular, Clark County Section 10 mitigation fees, Bureau of Land Management Section 7 mitigation fees, Lincoln County Section 10 funds, and Coyote Springs Investment LLC. The stretch of US 93 is the last segment of Mojave Desert Tortoise critical habitat in this state without fencing or protected crossings. Completing this project ensures we address a longstanding gap in our conservation efforts. The project is crucial for establishing the Mojave Desert Tortoise population and promoting connectivity, helping this federally threatened species recover. The start date for this project is yet to be determined. And this pretty much concludes my presentation. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll go on with our agenda.
Thanks, Chairman. The next item on your agenda is to approve your consent agenda, which consists of Items 5 through 24, and could be taken in one motion.
I'll entertain a motion. There's a motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Chairman. Next item is to receive an update on the recent, as you heard, Transportation Resource Advisory Committee resolution. And today with us is Jeremy Aguero. And as his sidekick over there is Mr. Guy Hobbs.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Guy Hobbs is not my sidekick. I am his sidekick. As, as been mentioned from time to time, Chairman Hardy could not be here today to, to sort of present. So as staff, myself, Guy Hobbs, Melanie Swick, I was asked to sort of give a very brief overview relative to the work of track, the conclusions that took the form of the resolution that you've heard folks testify on before today. I have a presentation. I don't know if I need a clicker to be able to advance that. Thank you so much. The, the, there were a number of meetings that were had. These were foundational in nature. I think that the, the, the nature of the exercise was largely to inform the public relative to the existing challenges that are being faced by the Regional Transportation Commission. I know Ms. Maynard and her entire team have been diligent in terms of increasing the dialogue or just continuing to have dialogue around the challenges that the RTC is seeing relative to revenues and expenditures, but making sure that this group understood what those were from the RTC's perspective. Thank you for participation in all of that. And then really a deliberation among the group to get an understanding of how important transportation truly is, not only to the community, but to their individual businesses, households, consumers, those type of things. The second of the meetings dealt with the reality. And in that, Guy Hobbs, in coordination with others in our office and others, including the, the fiscal staff from the Regional Transportation Commission, developed a, a financial model. And that financial model allowed for what-if testing, essentially to say, what if revenues go up? What if revenues come down? What if this revenue comes in or that one doesn't? What happens if something like fuel revenue indexing goes away? Or what if it stays on? What does it look like for it? The, the idea with that was to ensure that the problem was not only defined in terms of what its potential impacts would be, but also what its finances would mean. What does the gap look like? And what do they, what does that challenge look like in ones and zeros going forward? That meeting also included local governments and an Endot panel talking about the infrastructure that was needed to keep pace with the growth our community is seeing. There's no doubt that as we sit here today, we can look back and think about all the benefits we've had from good decisions that have been made, and infrastructure that was laid that allows us to live the way we do, move the way we do. These folks all came up and talked about what was going to be necessary just to keep pace with the level of growth that we're expecting throughout Southern Nevada over the next decade or two. Do I need to speak up? I'm sorry. I'll try and speak up. Forgive me. Relative to meeting number three, it started to have a dialogue around the solutions. And from the solutions standpoint, the RTC asked us and their entire team to evaluate every possible solution we could come up with. Now, some of them we just had to dispose of because they're never, ever, ever going to happen. We're not going to change the state's constitution or something along those lines. But there is a bucket, a toolbox, if you will, of available alternatives. And the, the group wanted to go through and talk about all of those. We'll get into them a bit when we go through some of the solutions that were offered in the resolution. Finally, the, the track came forward with a plan. As my wife always likes to tell me, the identification of a problem absent a solution is nothing more than a complaint. And track is not designed to complain. Track is designed to come forward with businesses looking at the community, taking in all of the information and offering recommendations, respectfully offering recommendations to elected officials who have to make difficult decisions and forward some of these, as well as staff who have to have conversations with legislators and others along these lines. They did exactly that, and it took the form of a committee resolution, which I'll talk about at the end of my presentation. Before I go through that, I just want to lay just a very minimal foundation relative to the, the elements that go in to the financial considerations that underlie the work of track. And I think the concern of RTC, this board, and, and your colleagues throughout the community relative to transportation and its relative importance. When we think about transportation, we break it into two major component parts. One is transit, one is roadways. And while we try to think about these as separate and distinct, of course, they relate to one another in so many important ways. But for purposes of what we're talking about today, I think it's important to recognize that the transit system is not only among the most prolific in the United States, a great deal of ridership, but also among the most efficient in terms of its ability to generate fair revenue. This is not, you know, as, as I think everyone here is aware, transit is an expensive enterprise. There's no doubt. It's also a very important enterprise relative to the number of people that it moves. If we look at the transit side of the equation and we look at that revenue, 544.7 million by the time we get to 2035, there's no doubt that revenue has come up. It has also benefited tremendously from things like one-time funding from ARPA and the increase. But it is expected to increase by 15%. However, if we look at the expenditure side of the equation and we roll all of that in, and we think about the capital expenditures that go in to ensuring the transit system can remain, and we think about the ups and downs that happen, what we see is that over time, a change occurs. On the left-hand side of our charts, we're pretty close in terms of revenues meeting expenditures. On the right-hand side of our chart, it starts to get further and further away. And that is a deficit, and sometimes that is referred to as a structural deficit. You look at the, the figures on the right-hand side of our exhibit here in terms of where that revenue comes from. Those transit fees that we talked about are about 17.1% of revenue. And that's great if we look at it across the United States. Sales and use tax, federal grants, Medicaid reimbursements, those type of things all shore up the total revenue that's shown on our chart. On the other side of the equation, of course, is roadways. Roadways are largely funded from two major sources or one major source of revenue, and that is fuel tax. On the blue is what fuel tax revenue has been. And I think as this group probably knows more so than anyone else around our community is that the way we consume, consume fuel is changing. Whether the fuel, we're becoming more efficient, so it costs us less for every mile that we drive, and we're increasing the number of alternative fuel vehicles, including electric vehicles. So if we see the blue line, this is just our fuel tax, you can see that it's remained almost flat since FY 2010. Fuel revenue indexing is the piece that's shown in the orange areas on the top and has increased that by $900 million during that period. This will sunset in, in January of 2027. And as a result of that, the revenue that we're seeing here will not continue to increase, and it will look flat-lined like it does before. Mr. Swallow gave what I think is a much better presentation than I could certainly give relative to all of the projects that have either been proposed or in the pipeline. At the point the track got together, they had identified the, the, the community, the entities, had identified 166 unfunded projects for a total of $2.2 billion. As of today, that number's closer to about 179 projects and $2.8 billion. These are projects that we currently do not have funding for that are in the pipeline, that we know that we need in our community in order to maintain the level of service that we just have today. With regard to the roadway funding sources as they exist, these are, of course, funded largely by bonds. Bonds are issued by the RTC. That money is brought forward. We then, we, the RTC then uses that money to build things as well as their partners to build everything, the roads that we, we benefit from and, and Mr. Swallow talked about overall. What you see here is the idea that in absence of fuel revenue indexing, we bring those costs forward. We essentially bond where we can to get through as many projects as possible, leaving essentially a gap as we go forward. And if we look at roadway funding sources and uses, the little orange, I don't know, dots with a line through them are the expenditures, you see that we're able to do quite a bit early on in the period. But in absence of revenues that exist today that will no longer exist going forward and therefore cannot be bonded against going forward, leave a huge gap well into the future. The next steps for the RTC, I think, are unambiguous. And I think track was very clear about this, both in their recommendation and in their deliberation. RTC is dealing with a new reality. I think this board knows it. We've had these conversations before. What got us here is not going to get us to 2050 by any stretch of the imagination. They exist both in transit and transportation. There is no way to say, oh, we're fine over here in transit and not transportation, or vice versa. And we've had some long conversations about transit and some conversations about transportation, but not often all of them coming together, which is what track spent a great deal of time really looking at. RTC and, and then really in demonstrating that to track, tried to evaluate every potential revenue source that was out there. And I guess I shouldn't just say revenue source. They also evaluated every option that is out there, which also includes the need to reduce the number of projects that are constructed or to reduce the level of services that are out there. In addition to that, what track noted, and I think the RTC always brought forward, is that the strategy must be adaptable, right? We cannot see the future with perfect vision. We don't have a crystal ball. We don't have the ability to essentially tell the legislature or tell the governor what to do. But at the end of the day, making sure that all of the options are open so that we know where we need to get, even though the pathway there may be different than maybe what we envision immediately today. Important that it remains flexible and adaptable. That toolbox that I talked about had many things. I didn't want to make this slide ridiculously small, so you'll forgive me. Things like FRI reauthorization, electric vehicle parity fees, flexible, flexibility for Q10 dollars, and so on, and so on, and so on. And I would suggest that this was maybe one-fifth of the total considerations that Mr. Hobbs and his team went through in sort of evaluating everything that might be possible. In thinking about budget adjustments, what happens if the, we get to, I guess, what's at the bottom of the toolbox, which is reduce long-term transportation investment and transit cuts? What do that kind of look like? It's deferred capital projects, it's contracted services being cut, it's implementation of a hiring fees freeze. These are not new ideas. These are things that the RTC has had to do before in difficult circumstances. And frankly, a difficult circumstance that is created by an existing revenue source no longer being there for the Regional Transportation Commission and the reality that transit has largely been held up by federal ARPA funds. The, the, the reality of both of those things means they're going to have to go back. You're going to have to go back and at least consider some of these. And these aren't just numbers on a page. These are impacts to real people in our community. And I, I, you know, I live in a world of ones and zeros. I readily admit that's who I am and what I do. And my job here was to staff, along with my colleagues, to staff track on behalf of that. But it's difficult to not think about the reality, the sort of social contract that exists when someone buys an apartment or buys a house and they're near a bus stop because that's how they get to the hospital, or that's how they get to their job, or that's how they get to the grocery store. When the RTC evaluates what they're going to do in the event that there is no option, that they do have to make cuts and staff is going through that exercise, they try to do the least amount of impact. They try to impact the least amount of folks. And in going through that impact, 343,000 residents, about 19% of the current population, is either directly or indirectly affected by these cuts. And by directly, I'm talking about 5,700 jobs, excuse me, 1,000, excuse me, jobs become inaccessible. 22,000 residents living in, below the poverty line lose service. And 4,600 without access to a car lose service. And again, this is designed to do the least amount of impact on the community when facing the reality that every dollar can only be spent once. And what I said about direct and indirect impacts, I think it's also important to recognize that those individuals are the consumers. They are the links to all of the businesses that we have in our community, whether those are education areas, whether those are hospitals, whether those are schools. The reality is that we are not, sorry, that sounds very presumptuous, Chairman. I'm sorry. The, the reality that the RTC is not going to have to cut services, and somehow those services are not going to impact people's ability to get to work, get to see a doctor, get to a grocery store is just unrealistic. And these are just some of the businesses that will, or entities that would, without a doubt, be impacted. Having shared all of that and, and track having deliberated around all of that, the chairman asked that the group develop a series of recommendations through a resolution, which has been provided. And I will just touch on the five major elements associated with that. Number one, the extension of fuel tax, excuse me, fuel revenue indexing, commonly referred to as FRI. The group overwhelmingly was supportive of the idea that this revenue source has been essential to maintaining the level of infrastructure that we have, to maintaining the level of, of flexibility that we have in terms of our community, and it is necessary going forward. Number two, the, the track, track also indicated support for equitable electric, hybrid, and alternative power vehicle fees. Today, as I mentioned, and I know is very clear, in here, the vast majority of our roadways are funded through gasoline tax. And we have cars that are either utilizing no gas or very little gas as a result of that. And that creates an inequity relative to the impact on our roadways and the ability to fund those. Number three is to improve coordination and communication for roadway construction. I know Mr. Swallow talked about the ways to get access, but everyone continues to, to believe that those, whatever we can do to create coordination, to lower the impact associated with any disruption that happens as a result of construction would be a benefit to the community. Number four, track recommended that the development of revenue sources for public transit, right? The identification where there could be revenue sources that would have a nexus to that transit. It should be there, including creating flexibility of existing sources so that those could potentially be used. And number five, the separation of baseline and aspirational funding needs. I am mindful that as I sit up here, much of what we have talked about today is simply maintaining the level of service that exists in our community today. The RTC has impressed upon us as staff, and I think they impressed upon track throughout their deliberations, that this is the status quo, that this is the beginning, that this ought to be the minimum level of service that we talked about, that there's so much more that could be done. There's so much more that should be done, that transit is a great equalizer for us in our community. And the, the ability for us to build roads as wide- And the ability for us to build roads as widely as we are going to build buildings tall is likely to be impossible overall, and so going from that. With that, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the Chair of Track, Chairman Hardy, and the entire Track Committee, I am grateful for the opportunity to be here. I am grateful to the RTC for the opportunity to be here and with my colleagues for helping prepare all this. If there are questions, Mr. Chairman, I am more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Aguero and Mr. Hobbs and the entire team for the amount of work that went into this, and certainly the executive team from the RTC for years of working on this. Can you go back to the slide that showed the transit funding sources? Yeah, so I just want to note for the record that things are pretty dire with the assumption that we continue to get 17.5% of our revenue from federal grants. Has there been an alternate scenario contemplated if the current, or the soon-to-be administration takes a different view with regards to funding transit?
If it's appropriate, would you like me to answer it? Sure. Mr. Chairman, for the record, Jeremy Aguero. The brief answer to your question is that that reduction increases the gap and will only serve to increase the magnitude of the impact that would occur. The other piece, Mr. Chairman, that I think realistically, and I will certainly defer to your team, who is much more knowledgeable about this than I am, is that it could also be sooner. And there is a, there's a time bound to all of this, right? A big part of, I believe, why the RTC Board has asked for this exercise and staff has undergone this exercise is because they're putting up a yellow flag and saying, hey, we've got a problem in the future. Don't let that problem become a crisis. Mr. Chairman, if some of what is possible becomes reality relative to those federal grants, it will be a crisis much sooner.
Yep. CEO, Mayor.
Thank you. And to Jeremy's point, you know, while we certainly appreciate the amount of federal funding that we receive, regardless of the Republican or Democratic administration, that money is, it just covers mostly our rolling stock. I want to point out that if you look at the green bars, we are sustained today, our public transit system is sustained today because of the stimulus funding that we received. We received $304 million. If we had not received that money today, we would have started cutting service back in 2020. And so it really is, in talking to, you know, folks that work in the USDOT, it's, the message has been loud and clear, it starts with, it starts locally. And so while we certainly, again, we rely on the federal government to assist with those federal grants, whether it's formal funding or discretionary grants, it's the local, it's a local problem, we have to find a local solution. And so at some point, again, in looking at various potential revenue opportunities, to go out to a ballot question in the future is something that we're going to have to consider because the deficit is just so, so large.
Just reemphasizes the need for us to maintain relationships with the incoming administration. I know Ms. Maynard is one of a very select group of individuals who are meeting with the new Transportation Secretary, and so we're very fortunate that she's in leadership position nationally. But also with regards to our federal delegation, we absolutely have to continue to be very diligent to ensure that from the congressional side of things, that there aren't additional cuts because this doesn't even, to your point, Mr. Aguero, this doesn't even show the worst-case scenario.
No, sir.
Other comments? Councilman Wallace?
First of all, I'd like to thank you for that report. It was very informative. I think a lot of times people look at this and they think, oh, this is dire for the big cities, poor Las Vegas. I hope everyone understands, I come from a smaller community, so does this gentleman to my right, and there's a lot of just county areas that rely heavily on RTC and would not be able to fund their roadway projects at all without your help. We truly appreciate it. But this just isn't going to affect the bus drivers in Mesquite or the workers in, or not Mesquite, but in the city of Las Vegas and this proper four-city area. It's going to be devastating to the smaller outlying areas, even more so, I think, than it will be the big city.
Thank you, Councilman. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I've been listening to this, and it, we have an opportunity before the state legislature, for instance, so are we going to go up with a complaint in your words, or are we going to come up with a plan?
Angela Castro, for the record, we are going up with a plan that is backed by stakeholders and community support.
And the plan is?
And the plan is to, for priority number one, is to ask for an extension of fuel revenue indexing. And then priority number two is to look at a potential ballot question and getting that done between now and 2028. So there's two priorities that we have, fuel revenue indexing being our major priority that is, has been backed by the community.
I think that's great that we've got that up front and admit it, and we're going up there in lockstep, as it were, and recognize that we need to do something. And to the Commissioner Wallace, we have a need for people who are using the paratransit as well. And without that paratransit, they will be homebound with all the attendant problems that exist from a medical standpoint, if nothing else. So I think that has to be part of our plan. Thank you very much for your presentation, Jeremy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Kunitz?
Thank you very much for the report, and, excuse me, I will sound like a broken record, but I continually talked about education or healthcare, access to food, these are things, quality of life issues that our community has struggled with. We're at the bottom of pretty much every single list out there. But the equalizer in government, we're sometimes forced to talk in silos, so we're talking about transit today. Transit is actually an equalizer across us all, so you cannot talk about improving access to education, healthcare, or access to food if you don't have transit. So I think that's important in our conversations with the legislature, with the governor, is if you do see declines in our access to transportation, you are also going to see equivalent declines in education, healthcare, access to food, and every, every other quality of life measure out there. This is how we get to those things. If you can't get to education, you're not going to get educated. If you can't get to food, you're not going to be fed. And if you can't get to healthcare, you suffer the consequences. So this is of the utmost importance, that this is the equalizer for everything else in our community, is being able to get to that service. And for the presentation, very grateful, and this is something that's incredibly important for our community to understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chair?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, basically reiterating what all the colleagues said. Of course, you know, myself, when we start talking about things such as the heat island effect, those are, it's something that, of course, that affects our entire community, but there are certain communities, of course, that have built-in disadvantages. In North Las Vegas, East Las Vegas, heat island effect has a stronger impact than it does in other parts of the valley. That's the way it is. And of course, I think when we make the entire community, and probably the entire state realize that these, that these disadvantages are going to strike harder in certain communities. I, as my colleague pointed out here, you can only imagine if people didn't have, if they, if they do have access to some, to some medicine and aren't able to access it on a more convenient timeline. Before you know it, they're at UMC. And then we all pay more, you know? The economic, that's just one example. I recently, you know, not that long ago, I took a ride on one of our lines, and on that line, I was riding there with people who were on their way to work, right there in downtown North Las Vegas. And of course, you know, we service lots of people who, they wind up contributing to the economy of North Las Vegas. I also rode with a few students on the same line to CSN, including one of the professors, one of the teachers who was, that was his main mode of transportation to and from work. Again, the impact, the economic impact is, although there will be some people in our community who will say, well, that doesn't affect me, I've got my Tesla. That's not going to affect me, I don't ride the bus. My kids, I drop them off. What's not stated is they're going to wind up paying for it, one way or another. And, you know, if they happen to have a small business and all of a sudden their employees can't make it, right, because we had to cut service somewhere, they'll be paying for it later on. I guess that most, it's not really a question, more of a statement. I guess everything that we can, anything and everything we can do to let the greater community realize we're all in the same boat. We need to be all rowing together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, and I think for the board and Mr. Aguero, the entire team for the presentation and for the tremendous amount of work that went into this. And again, thank you to our Track Committee for all their work on providing these recommendations to us, and we look forward to going to the legislature with the support of this board and with the Track Committee.
Thank you. And again, I want to also thank you, Jeremy, you and Guy and your staff, to, of course, our Chairman Hardy and Vice Chair Danny Thompson. Your work, Stell, you dug in, you made us better, smarter, and just to really appreciate both of you so much.
Thank you, MJ. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, can I just make one request? On the two incoming board members, I believe it'll probably be Mayor Shelley Berkeley and Councilman Seabock from Henderson, can we make sure this presentation gets to them?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so Chairman, the next item, non-consent item number 26, is to approve the Let's Go 2050 Regional Transportation Plan. And today, our Senior Director over our Metropolitan Planning Organization Division, Andrew Kelman, is here to present.
Thank you, MJ, Andrew Kelman, for the record. This morning, I'm going to provide the final update of the Regional Transportation Plan, and it's branded as Let's Go 2050. We are seeking approval of the Regional Transportation Plan, or RTP, so we can meet our obligations to update it every four years. The RTP must have a planning horizon of at least 20 years, and this plan looks out 25 years into the future. With this long-term outlook, the purpose of the plan is to forecast the long-term needs for our region's transportation system and then identify the specific projects for implementation. This chart shows the process of developing an RTP, and it really never ends. It's a continuous build on all of the work that local entities do throughout the year. It reflects major NDOT projects and is all coordinated through the RTC's subcommittees on an ongoing basis. The plan also meets new planning requirements contained in the bipartisan infrastructure law, ensuring this plan's investments are aligned with regional plans for housing and that they also address climate change and equity. Community engagement was fundamental to the plan to make sure it reflected local priorities. The transportation needs of a fast-growing region like Southern Nevada, which will surpass 3 million residents by the year 2042, are not the same as in other regions throughout the country, like Philadelphia. And the process of, and the purpose of developing the RTP is to identify those challenges and address them. Public outreach started almost a year ago, and we reached over 124,000 people through a variety of in-person and virtual tactics. We developed an online virtual public meeting site that was visited over 11,000 times, and we participated in over 35 community events. We also leveraged new tools to enhance community engagement, one of them being an online comment map that you see here on the right-hand side of the slide. And this allowed a clicking of thumbs up or thumbs down on individual projects that we were recommending for funding. About 90% were thumbs up, and even some of the thumbs down we received were because people wanted projects completed sooner. We also received lots of open-ended comments, with most of them being supportive. The bottom of the slide shows an example of one of the comments we received. A transportation vision survey was also developed, and we received over 4,000 responses. One of the main findings of the vision survey was that residents have a lot of different transportation priorities, and they want projects to accomplish many different things. Responses highlighted the need for investments in all areas of transportation, but specifically for the highest priorities of safer roads, more transit, and an increased focus on roadway maintenance. These survey findings were then used to guide development of the plan. The six goals of the RTP closely matched top priorities from the vision survey. The vision statement also incorporates feedback received from stakeholder workshops, and their agreement on final language was key to developing a final unified plan. One of the primary components of an RTP is the project selected for funding. The RTP is a method to receive federal funding. As the transit provider, the RTC receives funding from the Federal Transit Administration to operate and maintain the transit system. In addition, in our role as the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the RTC has also allocated funding from the Federal Highway Administration. These funds total about $80 million per year, and they must follow a regional prioritization process to identify the best projects for funding. These federal funds are completely separate from the local roadway funding that was just reported on by David Swallow. They are not part of fuel revenue indexing or the capital improvement program. To identify projects for funding, the RTC released a call for projects to your local entities, your agencies, early last year. From this, we received 119 project applications and were able to prioritize funding for 101 of them, totaling about $3 billion over the next 25 years. RTP is different from other plans in that it is not a wish list or things we want to do. Each project included in the RTP must have an identified funding source. One of the key takeaways is that we have significantly more needs than we have funding available. On the right-hand side of this slide are just a few of the example projects of the 101 projects funded. And I always like to note that these funds cannot be spent in Boulder City, Mesquite, or outlying areas of Clark County. Clearly, these areas are included in our plan, it's just that these specific funds have to be spent in the urbanized area. But we do recognize that residents of Boulder City and Mesquite do drive on these regional To select projects, the MPO assesses each project individually before awarding funding. This process has been reviewed and approved by the Federal Highway Administration. To do this, we developed a project benefits calculator to help us evaluate each project and then summarize all of the benefits together. The annual benefits of all of the 101 projects funded by this plan are expected to reduce over 280 crashes per year and save over 60,000 hours per day in traffic reduction. So what does this mean for the average driver? It's about three hours every year not stuck in traffic. The plan also anticipated an increase in bicycling, walking, and transit trips by over 70,000 a day, and the economic benefits is the sum of all of these combined. The plan also meets the United States Department of Transportation's Justice 40 Initiative by ensuring over 40% of federal project investments are located in communities of concern, highlighting the impact the RTP has on advancing equity. Another central benefit of reduced traffic and more travel options is improved air quality. Per federal regulations, this plan must not contribute to any violation of air quality standards. The plan has met these standards by demonstrating that travel-related emissions are less than the established budget set by the Clark County Department of Environment and Sustainability for carbon monoxide, PM10, and ozone. And finally, for next steps, we are seeking approval of the plan here today. This will allow us to submit it to NDOT, the Federal Highway Administration, Federal Transit Administration, and the Environmental Protection Agency for final approval and meet our four-year update deadline. And we will, and in the future, we will regularly update the plan. These are typically for project-specific changes. But ultimately, with these projects now having an identified funding source, we can get to work on readying them for construction and implementation. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kelman. This is, it was, it was kind of fun to get involved on this process more so than I think ever before from my office, and really interesting to learn how the process works and great to know what our priorities are. Any questions or concerns from the board? Very good. Then I will entertain a motion to approve the Let's Go 2050 Regional Transportation Plan. All right, there's a motion on the floor. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you, Andrew. Let's see. Chairman, the next item is to receive information from our legal counsel. There are no items to discuss. We can move on to your last agenda item, which is to conduct your final citizens' participation period.
Very good. This is the second time set aside for public comment. Anyone wishing to provide public comment with regards to any matters before the Regional Transportation Commission, please step forward to the microphone, state your names, spell your last name for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. I want to go first to Shelley Jones.
My name is Shelley, S-H-E-L-L-E-Y, J-O-N-E-S, and I want to say that Happy New Year to everybody. Also, I like paratransit. Also, I like paratransit, especially like Silver Ride You Serve. And I call it tangle, even though it's RTC on demand. All the drivers are very professional, and I do appreciate that. And I actually wanted to go last, because I wanted to hear what everybody else had to say in public comment. But it is what it is, so I have next month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shelley. Sandra Jones?
My name is Sandra Jones Daniel. The paratransit lost my marriage license, so my Jones is my name. Anyways, my name is spelled S-A-N-D-R-A-J-O-N-E-S. I got last Monday, this Monday of the past, I had an RTC bus ride. They went down to Las Vegas Boulevard and to, on that street, and they were supposed to come in, but they didn't. They went down and they picked up somebody and lied my ride data. Send another ride, they, another bus went, it was like, follow the leader, and follow another RTC bus. Then they sent me another RTC bus, which I was in, we call it research. And they told me that I'm going straight home and sick, riding around the world naked aces. Something needs to be done about it, because that's very uncalled for. That's not professional-like. You don't tell the person one thing, and then they do the opposite. And appointment time, they don't honor appointment time. And people that make the managers don't listen, the address, street, or anything. Especially when I have a caregiver, you know, they don't put it down. So it's like, I have to sit and wait until they okay it? That's ridiculous. Something needs to be done about that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Ms. Braddock will fill up with you. Next speaker?
Good morning. My name is William Lynn, our president of ATU. First, I wanted to say, in behalf of what Angela said earlier, we are definitely standing behind legislatively with the RTC in that plan to head to change things. I also wanted to thank the RTC in recognizing Jeff Bethel. We lost an amazing person this month, a great trainer. Through the years, it makes me realize how long I've been here, and how things have changed vast. But, then, like I said, a great trainer, a mentor, a good friend. And I wanted to make most of today about honoring him, because he is one of the very big contributors of the reason that I'm still here. And I just wanted to make that very clear. And he definitely was a big part of, well, at Las Vegas Transit, to RTC, to ATC, and a lot of good years. A very good man, and he will truly be missed by the city and by plenty of the operators and stuff that he has touched over the last, over forty years of service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close second public comment period, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.